Roland.
You're on record.
All right. Meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, February 5th, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA, TENCO, and 4-6 Head Sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. DeRiche.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Councilwoman McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Meth.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our special planner, Mr. Snikus, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle, and our regular board planner, Ms. Winter.
All right, if we could stand and say Pledge of Allegiance, please. I. Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America. It is considered public for its existence. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I think it's a little warm in here. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has something to address to this board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We have no resolutions, and the first item on our agenda tonight is the proposed amended redevelopment plan for 1515 Route 10, Block 200 Lots 1.2 and 1.03. Mr. Snikus.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It's coming through. Okay. Good evening. What I have for the board this evening is the District 1515 Route 10 redevelopment plan amendments, and that's for Block 200 Lots 1.2 and 1.03. If the board would look at, we have distributed to the board a cover memorandum of February 2nd, 2024. We've also included with that a draft amendment document as well as a draft redevelopment plan with amendments in it that are highlighted dated February 2nd, 2024. I just want to make sure all board members have this review. And what this is, if you recall at the last meeting, the board had authorized our office to prepare amendments to this redevelopment plan for consideration. And essentially what a redevelopment plan is for those that may have not been part of the process, it's an overriding document for that specific area. That's called the tract essentially, and we define the tract within the redevelopment plan, and it really relates to Block 200 Lots 1.2 and 1.03. And only those two lots. So what this is, is special zoning for that area, and that special zoning is what's being requested this evening to be adjusted. The process would be is tonight I brought those amendments to you after discussing it with the applicant and the details of those requested amendments. And then from here, if the board was agreeable to it, we would recommend it to the governing body for their consideration in possibly amending the actual plan. So this board is really offering the recommendation at this point, and then subsequently, once the governing body does in fact introduce it, it would be introduced as an ordinance essentially, and then we come back to the board one more time under the redevelopment plan aspect for consistency review with the master plan. And then from there, go back to the governing body for a public hearing of the actual amendments. I just wanted to go through that outline real quickly. In addition, what we've done in the overall government, and I was to give you the actual pages that were amended, and what I'd like to do is to, I know the board had some questions at the last meeting, there is actually some new board members that may not have been part of this process originally. And so what I've asked the applicant to do is to come this evening as well to offer sort of a brief presentation as to what the redevelopment plan encompasses, what it actually relates to, and what the overall scope of some of the amendments are. I'll go into the actual detail of the amendments for the board, but I'd love to them to just give you a quick overview as to what that was, what the project was, what it is currently, where it's currently at right now, because I know it's under construction, and what these overall amendments relate to. So with that, I will turn it over to their attorney, Nicole.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Nicole Magdiak, M-A-G-D-D-I-A-K of the law firm Day Pitney, here this evening on behalf of the applicant. As you heard already, we were here back on January 22nd, and we provided a brief overview of our request for an amendment to the existing redevelopment plan. There were some questions from board members at that meeting relating to just generally what is the project, as some board members weren't here at the time of its approval, and just the status update of construction progress. So we did put together a presentation this evening. There were packets that Ms. Jolie actually distributed ahead of time that should be in front of you, and we blew up a couple of those pages on a big sheet to present on a board. I know it may seem like a thick packet, but we do intend to run through it relatively quickly so that we don't spend too much time talking about any individual slide, but we do think it'll be really helpful and illustrative to the board as to what was approved and what's currently under construction. And then as we do that, we'll run through just some of the items that we requested, which we briefly talked about at the last January meeting as to what we'd like to amend in the plan. So with that, I have Mark Potchmit with me, who is a representative of the applicant.
Good evening, everybody.
Mark, can you just, for the record, spell your post and last name and give your business address?
Sure. Mark Potchmit, M-A-R-K, P-O-T-T-S-C-H-M-I-D-T, 2807 Delmar Drive, Bexley, Ohio, 43209.
And Mark, you're a representative of Stanberry Development, correct?
Correct.
Which is one of the parties of the joint venture development this way.
That's correct, yeah.
So if we can just start, can you run the board through?
I'm sorry, we'll just swear in the witness and just for the record. Do you raise your hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just walk us through the presentation materials that we've gathered, starting with the photograph of what was existing at the site?
Sure. The first picture you see there on page two is the state of the property when we bought it over 10 years ago now. It was a former Intel office building vacant at the time that we purchased it. We are also, Stanberry were the developers of Union Hill down in Denville, and we saw an opportunity to take Union Hill to the next level, creating a retail component in a mixed-use project, and we've been working on that vision for the last decade. So what you see on your page three here is the site plan for that. So the figure eight building on the right is a 100% multifamily residential building, 262 units, and that's under construction now. It is weather tight, they're drywalling right now, putting on the siding, and it's going extremely well. The building to the back is what we call Building B, and that includes the parking garage, the eight-story parking garage that you see driving down Route 10 right now. That is currently under construction, be wrapped with retail in the front and then residential above that. A portion of that project is a 55, 49 units or 55 and over, the rest of it market rate. And then the front building along Route 10 is Building C, and that's one story completely retail uses. In between there is what we call the woo-nurf, the pedestrian vehicular kind of mingled together to create a pedestrian-friendly main street, streetscape activated by restaurants. We have two liquor license that we will be using right where it says Building C. Those are two large restaurants with, you see the outdoor dining in front of those, and we have a number of restaurants with some additional outdoor cafe seating in front of the Building B on either side. Page four is the architectural rendering of what that all looks like. Once again, you see Building A on the left, the figure eight building. That building is scheduled to open late summer this year. Building B is the one that wraps around the parking garage. You see the parking garage sticking out there a little bit. That one is looking to open roughly a year after that, along with Building C, the retail building out front. Then slide five, slide five, page five, shows a state of construction pretty much as it is today. And then these next couple pages are just a series of some images of what it looks like ultimately, and then where it is with construction right now. So, and if you look at page, let me see here. Slide, or page nine on the right-hand corner, you see the jug handle connector. We affectionately refer to that as a Gordon meth connector. It was Gordon's idea, I don't know how long ago, a long time now.
I think Mr. Snikus deserves some credit, too.
To him. But the whole goal there is to provide access to the properties from our project, Delta Dental, and the Octagon Building, so that they can access their buildings through this connector and not have to go through the 202 intersection. So the whole goal is to alleviate some of the traffic at that overcrowded intersection.
And though that's constructed, it's not open yet, correct?
It's not, the connector is not open, the roundabout is open. That will be open when we open Building A later this summer. And then page 11 is the approved, this is the woo-nurf as it was approved, and I'll show you in a couple pages the changes we're looking to make, but basically, the two large restaurants in the middle of the C building, we're looking at covering those outdoor dining terraces with a permanent shade structure. And then on the bottom right, where you see lounge seating, stage, and the stickly chair, we're looking at changing those to provide some more cafe seating, relocating the stickly chair down to the lawn area, so that on either side of Building B, there's an opportunity for outdoor dining in both of those areas. And we envision those to be public seating, so you could bring your brown bag and have lunch there, or you can grab it from one of our restaurants. The covered dining in front of the Building C larger restaurants will be contained within a fence to control the liquor, excuse me, license. And then the next couple pages, page 12, is what it's going to look like ultimately when it's activated. You can see the cafe seating helps to activate the space there, and what we've got, the string lights going through there. Once again, the idea is to make that a very special town center component. On slide 13, it's a good view of the currently approved plans, which show no covered dining. And then if you skip ahead to page 17, it's a very similar angle, and you can see the covered structures on that page. A couple other highlights, this woo-nurf has been designed to be closed to vehicular traffic for special events, and we, part of our agreement with the town is to co-host, I think it's six or seven events with your Parks and Recreation Department to, well, we haven't brainstormed it yet, but the illustration on page 15 shows a farmer's market taking place perhaps on a Sunday morning. So that is a big component also, is to be able to activate that space and close it to vehicular traffic. On page 16 is what we are proposing. You can see the slight difference on the bottom right, there's outdoor dining there now, and the stickly chair has moved over towards the center of the woo-nurf. And the stickly, the whole stickly component here was suggested by council and previous planning boards that we pay homage to Gusoff Stickly and the Craftsman Farm. So that's a nod to that, and it's a little challenging to really take that and run with it, but I think our architects did a great job, which I'll show you here in a moment with the colors, color palette for the project. It's very Craftsman stickly color palette. So this also shows the covered dining areas in front of the larger restaurants here and the dining to the bottom left. So those are really the biggest changes that Ed will get into later, but as that impacts the woo-nurf, those are the improvements we're looking to make. And then on, let's see here. Another one, if you look at page 19 and 20, 19 is the approved signage roughly, the size that's permitted, where it says District Steakhouse and Wine Bar. And then the current redevelopment plan on the back of the building that actually fronts onto Route 10, it's required to be 50% smaller. And we, after we thought about that and studied it, that was really too small for the Route 10 frontage. We're working extremely hard with all these tenants to convince them they need to front onto the woo-nurf and not onto Route 10. So this is going to help us a lot in convincing those tenants to go on Route 10 and front onto the woo-nurf. And architecturally, I think, the larger signs fit the elevations a lot more naturally. So that was another change being made. And then I just wanted to share on page 21, these are the exterior finishes of the buildings, and you can see the color palette here with the wood siding, some of the greenish colors, the browns. All of that is driven from the Craftsman stickly palette. And then on page 22, it's, you can see it going up and what it looks like, and even since this picture was taken, these pictures were taken, there's now brick on the buildings, and we just think it looks great. And then the last two slides, I just wanted to share the new jug handle connector. You can see it on page 23 in the upper left, and has anybody driven on that yet? I haven't, I see cars moving through there. Also on 24, it's also on the right. So when this opens, that'll provide access once again to our project, to Delta Dental, and to the Octagon Building. So just real quick on numbers, wisers, 407 market rate apartment units, 42 COA units, 49 age-restricted units, just under 60,000 square feet of retail and restaurants square foot uses on our woo-nurf. We've got 209 surface spaces, 853 garage spaces, and another component is the electric charging stations that we are looking to accommodate on this project. So that is the quick 10 years and 10 minutes.
And Mark, in addition to the actual changes that were reflected into the buildings themselves in the woo-nurf area, for the amount of patients that you ran through, we are also looking to add uses as well, correct?
Yes.
Particularly the med spa.
Correct, yep.
And we did talk about at the January meeting, in addition to a medical spa also incorporating medical uses, but that has not been incorporated, has been withdrawn as a request, so just the medical spa in response to partly concerns given the intensity of medical access.
Okay, so you just want the aesthetic medical?
Correct.
Spa, not anything that has to deal with emergencies or illness?
Correct, or like a dentist office, not that, just the medical spa.
So effectively, you're really only asking for three significant changes. The one has to do with the signage, the one has to do with the medical spa, and the third has to do with the restaurants, which would include a fast casual type of?
And the covered dining for the two larger? Yep.
Yes, so the underlying or the original redevelopment plan allowed for restaurants, but didn't really classify the restaurants as to type, and your underlying ordinance does separate based on types of restaurants, so to make sure that it was clear and that we didn't run into any concerns with future tenants who operate a more fast casual type of restaurant versus a sit-down where someone would come and wait at your table. We wanted to do that now with this amendment so that we don't have any issues moving forward.
And there would still be no drive-through?
No drive-throughs, correct.
Okay. Okay. Mr. DiPiero.
The roundabout going along the back of the tract, that's going to complete all the way to Johnson Road, right? Do you complete that?
That's a tricky question in that.
That's why I asked.
There's private roads between the Delta Dental Building and the Octagon Building that provides access out to Johnson Road. We don't control those properties, but there is.
You're going to connect to it, though, right?
It is, yeah, so definitely, it will be connected to that, once again, private road. It's public road, if I can use this real quick.
So this is page three, and there is already an existing easement that has been agreed to and actually recorded relating to public access on South District Drive, which comes from the roundabout and runs along the back of the property up to West District Drive connecting to Route 10. So there is public access allowed on those portions of the road.
As part of our approval with NJDOT, they requested that West District Drive and South District Drive be public access so that the traveling public has a way to get out to Route 10. And since Persipony and Hanover didn't want to take the roads, we have them with a public access easement over top of it.
Thank you.
All right, but there would still, as it's constructed now, you do not have control over the road that would take it to Johnson Road.
Well, our property has a private easement to use that access. It's just not open to the, it's just not a public access.
I'm just, it's not in your control, really.
But if I can ask, you have retail components on your site, correct? So you're inviting the public onto your property anyway. So then your uses, if your easement rights give you the access to it, that would include all you, anyone who is a patron of your property, correct, which would be the public?
Yeah, I'm not returning to that.
Sure, so there's two separate easements that are recorded currently on the property. The one that covers South District Drive and West District Drive specifically permits public access, so anyone who's passing through or patrons of the restaurants, retail, or guests of the folks who are living there, or if I just happen to go the wrong way and I need to cut through, get back onto Route 10, and I'm at the roundabout and I realize, oh no, I need to actually go the other way. So that is completely open to the public and is supposed to be functioning in that way. The private easement, which was actually already existing before this project, running an extension of South District Drive behind Delta and Octagon out to Johnson Road, is a separate easement and is worded and written slightly differently, so it doesn't actually invite public access, and it's also limited to ownership and their, like, I don't have easements with me to read the exact words for you, but it doesn't invite all patrons or guests of everyone who's on the property.
But according to your point, I would think that the employees of Intel would have been going out that way without incident back in the day, so.
Understood.
So it is possible to get to Johnson Road from your site using that road, but it's not public access?
Correct.
Yes, you physically could drive it.
Physically could drive it.
Any other questions by members of the board?
Just one. If that private road, they decide they don't like the amount of traffic that's traveling, could they do something, make it one-way, go whichever way we don't want it to go?
So right now, the tie party agreement between all three property owners and to amend it, all three have to agree?
All three have to agree, so it's difficult for them to get, do something like that.
Yeah.
I would imagine as well, they would have to come into this board for a site plan approval and change that circulation plan.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. I've looked at the originals and now the newer plans. You're going down from 10 restaurants down to eight, is that right?
I don't know if that's the case. We're roughly, roughly, what is it, 20, I don't have those numbers in front of me because they're changing now, but with the med spa, 2,500, 2,250 square foot of the med spa, and the rest of it would be roughly 50/50 restaurant and retail.
Okay, and then you have fitness service in a couple spots?
Yes.
If it's a fitness center, are they allowed to serve, you know, protein food shakes and stuff like that? Is that something else?
That's a good question. I don't know, would they be allowed?
Something as an ancillary use associated with the fitness facility, I would imagine, but yet if it rises to the level of something where people are just coming to that sort of activity, it's then now considered more of a restaurant or food service.
And the service type uses we're thinking is hair salon, nails, stuff like that?
Okay, not a gym then? Or you're not thinking of a gym?
We're thinking of boutique gym, like Core Power or Cycling or?
Oh, okay, okay, all right. I just need to refresh my memory. Who is the parking garage for? Is it for residents only?
No, I believe there's 502 spaces that are on the upper floors. The five, the five upper floors, there'll be a gate for the residents. Below that gate, it's 300-something, that is open for the, to the public.
Okay, and then how about when people go to the restaurants and retail? Where do they park? Do they park in the front? They don't use the parking garage at all?
They use, oh no, those 300.
They can use those 300 and the other ones in front of the buildings?
Right.
Okay, and then what's the speed limit on the woo-nurf road?
I don't know if we, five miles an hour?
Sounds good to me. I was going to suggest five. You've got a lot of bike struts in the street in different areas, so make sure it's very low. Thank you.
Other members of the board? Our professionals have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, let me just summarize.
Mr. Snikus?
Again, not to belabor the point, but I just wanted to identify to the board that we highlighted in the overall document the recommended changes. Those are the highlighted text as well as in the narrative. As Mr. Chairman pointed out, it really is the permanent outdoor dining area that you're looking to have now as part of the component, where previously there would be a yearly permit in order to have the outdoor dining, but this just makes sense from the standpoint of what's actually proposed. You even saw it on the earlier site plan. So it seems to be something that just is appropriate and that the activities as well as the various design details of the available space and how they actually monitor that area, that is very similar to our current standards anyway in the code. What is different relative to the restaurant is that we are permitting the loudspeaker usage, whereas previously in other outdoor dining locations, that's not permitted currently. What we do, we did in fact carry over the standards relative to noise and the attenuation of noise relative to the times of day as well as the days of the week. Repeated those conditions within the new ordinance and the amendments that are in there, so I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Medical spa, we didn't have actually a definition for it yet, so we wanted to differentiate that from other uses, and that's something, as the general office would tell you, is something of a new use that's really becoming attractive to the community. Also, EV charging stations because of the state statute, that is now incorporated in the regulations, it would have had to be incorporated anyway. I know that you'll be coming back to for a site plan approval of the outdoor dining I know that you'll be coming back to for a site plan approval of the outdoor dining, so you will have a chance to see the details associated with that. And again, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we meant the changes to the sign ordinance in order to allow the signage to be on the back of the building. In addition to that, I wanted to point out on detail, is that we are permitting a logo to be permitted within that overall sign calculation, but the area, the cumulative area of all the sign area would still be in the same compliance. It's just a matter of that second logo sign. We felt it was appropriate. You can see it in some of the illustrations that have been provided to the board. I think it's very characteristic and complimenting the building, especially if the area is being controlled. But also, we required that they be no taller than five feet. So that would be an ultimate guideline. And then just a nuance with regard to what we're actually recommending is changes to the redevelopment plan, but also in order to capture the change of use for a medical, excuse me, use of medical spa as well as fast casual restaurant, we felt the need to amend the overall zoning ordinance to include those two definitions. So that's why it's a separate document that's before you, just so that that's clear for the board. So essentially, if you were in favor of this, you would be recommending the changes to the redevelopment plan as well as the changes in the actual amendment draft that you're having planned on. What we will do at that point is to coordinate that with the governing body, the Brooks Office.
Any members of the board have questions? Mr. Snakes? Jennifer, does the approach make sense to you and make your job easier if we were to approve it?
Yes, definitely. I agree. I think med spas is a new use that's come to precipity that the ordinance does not discuss. And I think it's important to not only add it at this location, but also to add it to the ordinance and to allow it in some different zones within the town.
So we should suggest to the council what they consider for other locations?
Yes, definitely.
Just Jennifer, as far as the parking requirements for that, that would also need to be taken into consideration.
Yes, Ed and I discussed that last week in a meeting and felt that it would be the same as a normal medical use.
Okay.
And that's what we have in the current state, the redevelopment plan.
All right. Are there any members of the public who have any questions or any comments on this testimony on this particular case at this time? Hearing and saying none. I guess this is your case. This is what you want us to present to the council. That closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there a desire for any discussion on what we're proposing to the council? Or should, do I hear a motion to propose as is or with amendments to the council? Mr. DiPiero?
I'll make a motion to present it to the council as is.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paul Henham. Very good. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
Piero.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And look forward to seeing you in, what, six weeks' time or something like that?
I would just ask that we do another motion to recommend the amendment to the ordinance.
All right. It's been pointed out to me by our attorney that we should also, because of the changes in the definitions, we should also move to amend the township ordinance for the effective.
I thought that was included. We need a separate motion for that?
Just for the record, we'll do, the first one was just about the redevelopment plan and then we'll just need one to recommend that the ordinance also is changed to match that.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Michael, you'll make that one again, Mr.?
Yes.
The Palatano, you do it again.
Okay.
Nora, would you call the roll again?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Schola.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Benzmore.
Yes. Okay, you got it all.
Thank you.
And see you at some date in the future if the council agrees with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. It's just after eight. We now move on to application number 23, colon 511, Sir Parsippany LLC, 299 Jefferson Road, block 736, lot 7.3. Preliminary and final major site plan with steep variance, major soil moving permit to construct a warehouse with associated improvement. This case was carried from September 18th in 2023.
Chairman members, nice to see everybody. For the record, Larry Calley on behalf of the applicant. Thanks for having us this evening. Mr. Chairman members, since it's been quite a while since we've been here, what I'd like to do is briefly frame what we accomplished the last meeting, little about the applicant background, what we've done since the last meeting, which has been a significant undertaking by the applicant, and where we hope to go this evening with our witness deck, Mr. Chairman, for a few minutes.
Any other waivers we need at this point? No, okay.
Yeah, no, we got to the substance of the case the last time. So I understand that, but sometimes changes. Yeah, nothing new on that front, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, so briefly, by way of background again, the property's on Jefferson Road. It's about a seven and a half acre site. It's in the SED 5 zoning district. It's an existing multi-story office structure, extensive impervious areas. We talked about it length last time. The structure was built in 1985 and we're here at the planning board for what is暂 not to a permitted use, which we'll talk about briefly in a moment. Just by way of background again, and we underscored it at the last meeting during our early proffer, but the applicant is not a recent owner of the property in Parsippany. The applicant is not new to Parsippany. This applicant has owned this property and several assets in Parsippany for a number of years. So this is not a typical recent acquisition where it's a speculative degree use of the property. This is an applicant that's had this property as a commercial home as part of their portfolio in this township for a number of years. The board knows very well that office needs have remarkably changed since the pandemic. There's been a lot of pivoting and this applicant, the longtime owner of this property, has deemed it pertinent to pivot to another use of this property that is permitted. I know the board realizes that, that's why jurisdiction is here and not with the Board of Adjustment, but I think our neighbors do understand that as well, that everything about the applicant's proposed use and operations here is permitted under the code in the SED 5 zone. At the last hearing, notwithstanding the fact that the use is permitted, we heard a lot of concerns and questions and consideration requests by the board as to what can be done to better enhance this project. Most of that discussion related to properties to our rear, which is a zone line buffer to a residential zone line. Again, we're in the SED 5 proposing a permitted use, but we've got a neighboring zone line beyond us, which is much more limited in its intensity use, it's residential, and there's a buffer back there. We talked about rotating the structure potentially and make it front loading, where the activated truck use is on the front side, Jefferson roadside. Our engineer has looked at that incredibly thoroughly. They've undertaken significant reviews on that and they've also looked at whether or not sliding the structure out of the buffer was also viable. The design landed on, the plans before you tell the tale, and our engineer will speak to it shortly, the slide of the structure seemed to be much more appropriate than a rotation from a number of aspects on the design side, on the traffic side. What was accomplished by that were a number of things that we'll talk about in a moment. But, you know, I want the board and I'd like our neighbors to appreciate the fact that this was months of consideration for this relief to be significantly reduced by the applicant. There were a lot of sums expended. I realize it's beyond the purview of the board, but it's a truth. And through it all, the applicant, this longtime owner in the township, had been very mindful of their neighbors, of the board concerns, and they looked at everything incredibly thoroughly. The existing conditions that we've got on site now, and we talked about this, Mr. Chairman, at length at the first meeting in September, the existing conditions are not ideal. The buffer setback is compromised. The 150-foot buffer setback is right now violated by the existing parking at about 60 feet. It's 50 cars that can face the residents at any time. The structure's out of the setback. What we came in with, this applicant's proposal initially, was improvements over those violations. An improvement of the parking by about 15 feet, an improvement of the structure by about 50 feet over existing conditions for the 75 and 109. Those conditions were still in the residential buffer and we had a lot of discussion as to whether or not activity in that buffer area was going to impede the residents abutting us over that zone boundary line, the property line to our rear. So what the applicant has done in the past several months has redesigned this and shifted the structure, street side, forward towards Jefferson Road, which has done a few things. It's completely eliminated the violation of the buffer setback. The applicant's structure and parking areas and loading areas are now beyond that buffer setback. There is no relief to the rear now. We meet the 150-foot setback requirement. Quite significant. The applicant didn't stop there. The applicant's also undertaken to implement an acoustic sound barrier. You're going to hear from an acoustic witness tonight, not part of our original expert witness deck, but this evening you'll hear from acoustic expert as to the implementation the applicant is putting at the rear for, no, belt and suspenders, let's call it, to ensure that the acoustic impact is not going to violate the code. In fact, it can't. We cannot ask this board for a reprieve, a variance or a waiver to violate a Norris ordinance. It's controlled by Title VII, as you know, under the state regulations. The township code mimics that to a large extent, so we need to comply with the sound regulations. The intent is to do so. Getting the activity out of the buffer into a compliant yard was the first undertaking that's been accomplished. The second is acoustical buffer, an acoustic wall at the rear which will help further dampen the acoustic impact. It's going to be conforming. And even further than that, there's plantings at the rear as well. Our engineer and our design professionals will take you through all of that shortly, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, but I want to again underscore the listening that the applicant had done at the prior meeting, the homework that the applicant has undertaken since the prior meeting, and the results that the applicant has accomplished in their effort to continue to enhance, modify and improve the plan that was before the board in September, which started out as a good plan. We believe it's gotten significantly better vis a vis the relief that's required and our neighbors' concerns. But with that, Mr. Chairman, tonight you're going to hear a repeat of some of our witness testimony. I'll tell you who you're going to hear from and when. Our project engineer, Ben Crowder, he's the Scrubber of Record of Bulleher Engineering. Ben will testify first. He's already been sworn in and qualified at the last public meeting. Ben is going to walk the board through the updated exhibit of the site plan rendering. When we get to that point, I think council, we're going to be on A3, I think is our next exhibit tomorrow. We'll walk you through the updated site plan details. Ben will locate all the improvements we're talking about, the mitigated relief that we've got now on the table as far as the bulk deviations, and then we'll go from there with any questions, of course. Our second witness will be our acoustic expert. Norm Dadi of Russell Acoustic has undertaken a review of the acoustic impacts occasioned by this warehouse structure, the building, the parking and loading areas relative to the property lines, and all the improvements between our structure, the parking areas and that property line, confirming that it will conform to the code requirements. Norm will walk you through all of his analysis and conclusions. Then what we're going to do is a very brief recall, I think, Mr. Chairman, of our traffic engineer. John Harder testified to and through cross examination at the initial public hearing, testified as to the benefit of his traffic analysis and impacts. I simply want Mr. Harder to get on the record to confirm for the board that he, one, reached the same conclusions as he did the first time around, that this remains appropriate, fully designed, it's proper for circulation and the like, and it can be properly parked, of course. There's no relief on that front. And as well as his expert opinion that the slide of the structure towards Jefferson was a more appropriate solution than rotating the structure with front-facing trucks. At that point, time for minimum, Mr. Chairman, we'll go to our architect. The board really hasn't seen the skin of this building yet. It's a really sharp-looking building, notwithstanding the fact it's a warehouse. It's a well-amenitized-looking building. We want you to see the skin of this building and the structure. Our architect will walk you through the floor plans, which are going to be limited. It's a warehouse for the two tenants we talked about. There's not much within the box. We want to show you folks the exterior, so we'll show you some of the elevations that you have on file as well as the renderings of what this will look like in the field. And then we'll go to our project planner. I don't think we get that far this evening, Mr. Chairman, but that will be the entirety of our witness deck as we move towards concluding the case for the benefit of the board, so you know when to ask the questions and our public as well. Okay?
All right. Do we have anything else? So we have any other, I guess the waivers are done as we said.
No, taking that in.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So we'll start with recalling our project engineer, Ben Crowder of Bulleher Engineering.
Mr. Crowder, as Mr. Calley stated, you're still under oath tonight.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me without a mic or should I grab?
Take the mic.
I can do this. Please do.
Since it has been a few months, I just wanted to quickly re-familiarize the board. I'm not going to go back to all my testimony on the originally submitted site plan, but just a quick refresh on the site with the application. This is what I had previously marked for the record as A1. It was an aerial exhibit of the property that was dated, the date of our September hearing, which is September 18th of last year. Subject site is about seven and a half acres within your SED 5 zone. As you had heard from Attorney Calley, currently occupied or formerly occupied by a three-story office building, as you can see, centralized on the seven and a half acres. One of the main focal points, and I did want to use the aerial as just a highlighting factor that was a topic from our September hearing, was certainly the compromised residential buffer behind the existing office building, where you have parking facilities and loading operations of that office building. They're as close as 61.9 feet away from that residential eastern property line behind the office building. You also see, and this will be continuous between what we had proposed with the original application, as well as looking at alternative options, and then also where we ultimately landed with the slide of this proposed building. The two access points on Jefferson Road predominantly in those same configuration as we laid out the industrial warehouse building. So what I'll put up now, this is the old plan, so this is what was originally submitted and I'll go side by side on these easels, so it'll give you a good comparison of where we were in September from our original application to what we've ultimately resolved to from a design perspective based on some feedback we got from this board and in some further considerations with our design team. So A2, as I previously marked, was a colorized site plan of what we originally submitted with the application. That exhibit, as I previously marked, it was September 18th of 2023. Just a quick recap of kind of what our proposal is. Relative to A1, we've now taken a 90-degree rotation, so at the bottom of this exhibit and the future exhibit that I'll mark for you here very shortly, the bottom of the plan is your eastern property line or that sensitive residential lot that is immediately to the east of our site. 106,400 square foot industrial warehouse building, a permitted use within the zone. A lot of what I previously testified to is isolating the employee vehicular access to the southernmost driveway and then isolating your loading operations. It was 14 loading spaces on the northern side of this building has its own independent access. As you heard from Attorney Calley, as we had originally presented this plan, we were improving that condition from that existing office building, but we were still requiring variance relief from that 150-foot residential buffer to the eastern property line or that abutting residential use to the east. So the parking area where we had some of the truck maneuverability was as close as 75 feet, so that was about a 14-foot improvement from that office use. And the building itself was 109, whereas, you know, per the ordinance is required to be 150 feet. We had also, from the balance of the variance relief, just as a quick refresh, because a lot of that will continue forward with this application, we had a variance as it relates to loading space size, where your ordinance requires the spaces to be 12-foot wide and the length two times the largest vehicle that is anticipated to be sitting in that space. We were proposing those 14 spaces at 13 and a half feet wide, 60 feet long, which I had provided was long enough to accommodate the trailer of the largest tractor trailer, which was a WB67, anticipated to access those loading spaces. Immediately across, 22 trailer storage spaces. Setbacks relative to parking and trailer storage was all in compliance with your underlying zone. We're also reducing impervious coverage from that existing condition by adding about 9,800 square feet of green space through some of these improvements. The balance of the variance relief was really related to steep slopes. I briefly talked about that. If I go back to A1, when this original office building was constructed, there were some man-made steep slopes predominantly focused around all four sides of this office building. By a function of demolishing that office structure, regrading the site, it was technically triggering the three categories of your steep slopes ordinance, and that was the balance of that outside of some of the wall signs that the architect will walk you through on the elevation. So now what I will do, so it'll go side by side, and I think I heard I'm at A3.
This will be A3, Ben, yes.
So now you have a side by side comparison of originally submitted site plan, A2, and as recently revised and considered since that September meeting, which I'll mark as Site layout plan exhibit stated with tonight's date of February 5th, 2024, and this reflects a colorized version of what was recently submitted prior to this hearing for our revised site plan. So what I'll briefly talk about, no change in building size. Parking in the change between the two layouts was only reduced by one, and I'll tell you why we did that shortly. But really what I'll get into is really three buckets of changes. And the first one really relates to citing the building on the property. And as you had heard from Attorney Calley, the main thing that we had evaluated was a rotated option, which had its traffic and circulation concerns, but also a shifted option. And we ultimately resolved to a shifted option where this building moved to the west or towards Jefferson Road by 41 feet. What that did is along that eastern property line, we now have no hardscape, impervious coverage, buildings, pavement, parking, or circulation within that entire 150-foot residential buffer. It's all green space now. What that also did, on the contrary, is push this into the front yard. There's a 100-foot front yard setback. We're now requesting variance relief on the 60 feet. But we thought in balance with shifting that building, getting that green space around the more sensitive residential property line in the back was a good site layout situation for shifting the location of the building. Still remains in full compliance with building coverage, lot coverage, parking setbacks, parking requirements, all other yards. It's now just concentrated toward Jefferson Road in favor of putting back that green space along the rear. Second bucket really pertains to parking and circulation. So if you look between A2 and A3, still maintain the two access points from Jefferson Road. What we also look to do, and I remember a couple of board members had the comment about from back on A2, some asphalt pavement, truck circulation turnaround area that was protruding as close as 75 feet in here with loading-unloading activity for the project. We've now lost five trailer spaces. So we went from 22 to 17, as I'm back on A3, and we've striped out this area to allow the trucks to maneuver in this area. Ultimately, that's creating 211 feet from this eastern property line to the nearest activity associated with the loading-unloading operation of the proposed use. So building, 150 feet, loading activities, 211 feet. I briefly talked also about the loss of one parking space. So you can see on A2, there were some parking areas that were slightly past and encroaching into that 150 feet. We've pulled that back, so now it's 99 parking spaces. 78 were proposed or required, so 99 proposed. And as from a zoning perspective, that's 103. The delta there is, as I had previously presented, your four EV car charging spaces that, per the state ordinance, count as two from a zoning perspective. Your truck and vehicular access are still separate. We've also worked with your fire subcode official within the building department. What you'll see kind of faintly hatched in this green space is still the accessibility for fire and emergency apparatus to, if they need to, get to all four corners of this building. But as previously presented, that's going to be a grass paver reinforced drive, so you're just going to have the natural grass growing through it. It's not impervious coverage, but structurally reinforced if a fire truck had to get back into that space. The last element, or last bucket relative to some of these shifts was, and we'll kind of lump them all together, the landscaping, the screening, and the sound attenuation. So we do have an acoustical engineer that'll walk you through some of the, as Attorney Calley had emphasized, belts and suspenders, sound attenuation measures on the property. We've also looked at some additional screening mechanisms in addition to creating that 150-foot horizontal separation of any structure outside that residential buffer. That being some consistent with the original proposal, where there's an existing wood line back here today, and we had no intent originally, and as recently submitted, of disturbing any of that woods. It's largely a deciduous wood line, so days like today where you don't have, you're in the winter and you lose all the leaf cover, you know, you can see kind of through it. It's very transparent. So what we wanted to do, and we had done this with the original proposal, is adding a full evergreen screen along the entire eastern property line and wrapping around to the north. We're still continuing to do that as I'm back on A3 with our revised plan. But what we've also done is at this northeastern corner, incorporate a landscape berm. So while you can't see that on A3 necessarily, four-foot-high landscape berm with also now the evergreen trees on top. And that was generally in response to some of the testimony that I had provided, where we had looked at the architecture of this building to recess those loading spaces actually within the footprint so that the building itself was actually doing a good screening mechanism if you were immediately to the east of this building. We also heard some feedback, residents, sightlines, if you were north of the property, looking back toward the industrial loading use. So these evergreens in combination of this landscape berm also create a vertical screening element in addition to that horizontal separation. The last element, which is the biggest one, I think it's an element the client has gone forward with, certainly is costly, but something that helps further screen and attenuate sound, and that is the implementation of about 258 linear feet of sound wall. That wall is 16 feet in height. That's also, from a screening perspective, also going to help with sightlines or mitigating sight-like potential into this northern portion of the site. But as you'll also hear from our acoustical engineer, also help from a sound attenuation perspective. And you'll hear a little bit more on the construction and workability of that wall as a whole. So that sound wall and screen wall is also kind of concentrating or isolating this loading-unloading component of the development on the northern side of the building, also further away from that eastern property line. So that's about that 211 feet. That generally is my direct testimony. There's a lot of the variances that I previously talked about with regard to the loading space size. We have a variance to allow a 30-foot-wide driveway for trucks, whereas 24 is maximum permitted. And then our steep slopes are the balance of the variance relief needed for the application outside of some of the wall signs from our architect.
And the fence height?
Great, yes. I forgot that one, the most critical, the wall and fence height. So with the implementation of this 16-foot-high sound and screen wall, technically within the side and rear yards, those elements are only allowed to be six feet. So we're 16 over six as a function of that sound screening element that we wanted to incorporate on the site for that loading operation.
So that'll be a variance?
Yes.
That's a variance, correct. That's generally it for my direct. I can certainly take any questions on the updates.
So I'm going to turn all the way down to Andrew down there.
Yeah, thanks for the testimony and the update. So just confirm, what is the front yard setback to the building you have now?
It is 60 feet.
And 100 is required?
100 is required.
And then I saw that you had several submissions back and forth, I think with the fire.
That's correct.
And I see appears that they have one, that they had additional comments on their last submission about additional turning area.
Yes.
What's your, what's the applicant's position on that?
It's something we can accommodate. It was basically if the fire truck got down to the end of the parking row, the ability for it to turn around in that space.
And then the water department had several comments as well, domestic water service, fire service lines. Any issues with complying with the water?
No, can fully comply there.
And the same for the sewer?
Yes.
Sanitary sewer.
As well as the latest report that you issued.
And could you just give some testimony on the signs?
Yeah, absolutely. So from a wall sign perspective, they'll show up on our architect's rendering, so you'll see that in the variance relief there. The freestanding signs, there's two there today that demarcate, they were previously approved with the office. As this building slides forward, the one associated with the southern driveway, we're just going to relocate in kind, but actually situate it within, you know, the 20-foot required setback it needs to have from Jefferson Road. So those signs will stay as is, just be refaced and repanelled for the tenancy of this building.
And then, as you guys commented on, you know, the request was to rotate the building, yet you have a sound wall and an extra buffer area as proposed. How did you come up with the sound wall location and height?
So several iterations from our acoustical engineer relative to the activity associated with the loading. So he'll be able to provide some testimony on the inputs that go into his sound study, which necessitates the location of the wall. We certainly played around with its location from an attenuation perspective, but also utilizing that as a screening mechanism to it, serving both purposes in this application just because of the sightlines and the view corridors.
So speaking of the screening, the houses, I think it's Emily Place, the adjoining residential development. Did you consider the height of those buildings and their view shed, their view toward?
Yeah, it certainly went into, our acoustical engineer will certainly talk about those levels relative to the different levels of each of those homes. But also from a, a 16-foot height is also a good mechanism because a tractor-trailer 13 and a half feet high, that was a good starting point. And then you also have some elevation drop that occurs in the rear of the sites or from a profile perspective that was kind of built into the berming, the height of the evergreen trees. And then as you got, you know, the 200-plus feet into the site, that sound wall, screen wall height.
That's everything that I have.
Members of the, Mr. Neely?
Referring to the access driveway in the southwest corner, the one on the left, yes. You did mention that fire equipment wouldn't have access to that.
That's correct.
How wide is that?
24 feet.
Terrific. That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions. Mr. DiPiero?
Yeah, I'm still not convinced, I'm the one that recommended that you rotate the building, so the loading would be on Jefferson Road and even further away from the residence on Emily. I'm not convinced that that wouldn't produce less sound. I'll wait for your sound expert, but it seems to me all those trucks backing up and doing the beeping would be more muffled by the building if that was close to Jefferson Road.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'll let our acoustical engineer talk.
Not only that, but you're going to, you're talking about two separate clients. One is going to be up on the top right-hand corner of the building, and one's going to be in the lower right-hand corner of the building. If you had rotated the building, they would both be facing Jefferson Road and have their own signs.
If we were to rotate this building, the 2,500-square-foot offices, based on the way the architecture of the building would lay out, would actually be facing the eastern property line.
Aren't those the offices on the right-hand side?
The offices are at the southwest corner and the southeast corner. Yeah.
I thought they were.
Now apologize to any confusion if I directed it that way, but they're southwest and southeast. So as you rotate this, those two office building locations and parking would be in the rear yard. And while there may be some sound benefits of the loading, a focal point for us was green space separation, getting rid of the residential buffer encroachment, because even if you were to rotate this building, you would still have parking and activity within that 150 feet.
Yeah, but it would be resident, it would be employee cars, which don't have backup beepers on them like the trucks do.
But you have headlights, you have circulation, you have lighting, you have movement back there where we had kind of weighed that against traditional green space and buffering in that 150 feet to give that whole green space back on the plan, all while looking at making sure we're keeping the sound in check as we have to.
Yeah, I think the cars in the back would have been less questionable than the beeping, but I'll wait for your sound engineer.
Other members of the board? Oh, Jennifer?
I just, I remember during my, during the last meeting in my notes, we talked about tenants. Was it, is it still a maximal of two tenants?
Maximal of two tenants.
Thank you.
Mr. Napolitano?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for these, appreciate them. All right, so there are 17 instead of 22 storage lanes?
That's correct.
Are any of those going to be refrigerated ones that are on all night long running?
No, those would be empty trailers, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Just to want to make sure I heard everything right. So instead of rotating the building like we hoped for, you did not, which is okay, but you shifted it to the west 41 feet?
That's correct.
So now it's another 41 feet further away from the homes? Or it's more than that than it was before? As you said, you took out a bunch of other stuff, right?
It was 109, I'm back on A2, it was 109, and now it's 150. So it was 41 feet for the structure.
Okay, all right. I heard 211 somewhere else. What was that one?
That 211 is where your closest distance to any of the loading-unloading activities. When previously back.
And what was that number before?
75.
There, that's where I got 211. Okay. So it went from 75 to the closest, now to 211 to the closest.
That's correct.
And you're going to add a full screen of evergreen trees? These are full-size living, already grown trees, not baby ones?
At install, all of them will be six to eight feet in height. They're spread out so that they grow, and then they can kind of mature into a full screen as they grow and take across the board.
All right, so it might still be noisy for them for the first couple of years that they fully grow.
The evergreen screen is more from a visual screen versus sound attenuation, but we do put them in a little bit at the six-to-eight-foot height just to allow them to take and grow. And they'll fill in, you know, a lot, our landscape architects have selected species that'll grow one to two feet in height, plus or minus per year, so they'll fill in quickly.
All right, so there's definitely some improvements for the residents who are behind there. Okay, thank you for those, appreciate it.
Mr. Math, I'm finally around to you.
Don't worry. Actually, it's a question from Ms. Winter to start.
Sure.
The 150-foot residential buffer required, there's an emergency road in this. Is that, is that an acceptable addition to a required residential buffer?
So my memory of what is required within the buffer is green space. So lawn would count. And I believe how it's fused is the pervious type pavers that the grass grows through. So I'm not sure that if it wouldn't count as a buffer.
Yeah, it really speaks to a structure, and then there's also further requirements for parking in the rear yard. So these pavers are actually kind of honeycomb geoweb, so you actually have the grass growing through them. So it's not just a material that lets the water get through, but it actually, you wouldn't know these are there outside of it just being general lawn.
Okay.
Fair enough. Any other questions, Mr. DiPiero?
And that will hold, that will hold the biggest fire truck we have?
That's correct, yes. No, no, we've specced this on many developments. It's an enhanced structural geo-grid that will, you know, provide a submittal to the fire department for the apparatus.
And it's not impervious coverage?
That's correct, it's grass.
How will, just, probably a stupid question, but as years go by and fire districts and firemen change, how do they know that it's there after, once it's in?
Well, what we're going to do, and it was part of some of the coordination with the fire subcode official, is also have signage that directs, that directs an apparatus if they needed to get to this rear backside, that they would know.
They'll put the signage there, okay.
On that same note there, I couldn't tell if you have delineators shown or included on the plan so that the fire department knows where this surface is under the grass and where it isn't so they don't sink. Do you have delineators shown?
No delineators. We are implementing signage. If that's something that they want for the 26 feet, we can certainly. I've seen definitely, you know, some smaller monument-type things that will frame out that width just so they know where they're going.
I mean, they responded, their memo was in there.
They did, they did request.
It may have been an oversight on the part because when the, if they do need to use this, they do need to act, they're going to need some visual cue beside a sign on where this 20-foot-wide traffic-loaded or vehicle-loaded suitable area is. It's 20-foot wide, and it's much, much wider back there.
26, 26 feet. That was a request, was to actually get it a little bit wider.
There is, you need to know, they need to know where their vehicle is.
We can certainly agree to work with them just to. We can certainly agree to work with them just to delineate that space if they, if they want something else in the back.
I think there was also a request related to keeping it clear of snow, so delineators would probably be helpful in that front, too.
Yep.
Oh, that's a request from the fire department?
Fire Subcode Official. I believe so, yeah.
So that, that could be a little bit tricky with the grass.
Yeah. So what I've seen, and we can work with them on whatever mechanism that might be, whether it is just a U-channel sign, but I've also seen some decorative kind of monument-type things that will frame out both sides. So it sticks up in a snow event, which is very similar to the flags you put on your landscape islands or driveway.
I think regardless of what they have to say, I think it's a very good idea to be adding those delineators so they know where they need to be going, not only for during an emergency, but like you said, if this is gonna be maintained for snow, everyone's gotta know where that is.
Yep, understood.
Mr. DeDich?
All right, my turn here. So real quick, on the backyard, is that just a green lawn or will there be any trees to protect against this acoustic or sound and everything?
So we have the, if I'm on A3, you have the existing wood line, which we're not intending to disturb whatsoever from what's out there today. Then you've got a brand-new evergreen screen, plantings, the entire eastern property line. As you get closer to this northeastern corner, those plantings get up on a four-foot-high berm. And then from that evergreen screen to the building as proposed is just lawn, up to that full 150-foot width. And that's also to accommodate the fire truck access.
Just a high level, right? How much, how many feet is the, the trees versus the lawn?
So you're 65 feet from the eastern property line to those evergreen trees.
Okay. And the acoustic wall you talked about during the, near the truck activity, how long is that wall?
258 linear feet.
To the entire parking?
So it extends from the northeastern corner of the building all the way to about 10 feet from the northern property line, because there's a setback requirement. And then it'll turn and it'll run about another 125 feet along that northern property.
Okay, no, not the entire parking space, right? Just a partial?
Just about 125 feet north.
Okay. And the last question, or maybe a comment, that is, the honeycomb delineators we talked about in the backside, and again, maybe, I think somebody talked about making sure it's clear of the snow and everything, but how about the weight requirements? Last thing you want is, you know, emergency vehicles going in there, they're stuck, right?
Yeah.
Would there be weight requirements or whatever, you know, vehicles have?
Yeah, so the geo-grid that we spec and we've worked with several of the manufacturers, because this commonly comes up on developments, is adequately loaded. We will send them the way to the fire emergency apparatus and then they'll give us the actual geo-grid spec.
Okay.
And we could certainly submit that, you know, to your professionals for their review as well.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Just another comment on that. I'm not concerned, I've seen that detailed use before. I'm more concerned about snow plowing the grass area, about ruining it if they, if they dig the blade in the ground. Do you have any experience with the snow plowing?
We do. That's something, we've actually approached the manufacturer about that with the way that the geo-grid is actually installed. It hasn't been a concern, but it's something that in this application we'll make sure is part of also the structural component of what we propose out there.
And I would suggest signage for the snow plowing for the maintenance. Again, they're not gonna know what's there.
Absolutely.
I see your landscaping, you know, stays significantly away from this, there's a large grassed area between this, this emergency access route and the proposed screening, six-to-eight-foot trees. Why such a large area of just grass?
We, so in addition to the fire and emergency access, this actually functions as a drainage swale on the property today. So you have some drainage that's coming away from the building, but also kept away from that eastern residential property line. We want to capture that internal to the site so you can vaguely make out on A3 some of the drainage structures that are picking up that runoff.
So you're maintaining those structures and that's still the low point?
That's correct.
Who's given the testimony on steep slopes and the variance for that?
That would be me.
And then also soil movement?
Yes.
Soil movement application?
Yep. So the steep slopes remain...
I don't want to interrupt, I just wanted to point you.
Yeah.
I don't want to change gears from review, but I just wanted to know that you're not gonna sit down until you have...
I can briefly talk about those.
Good time for you to talk about.
Yeah. So I previously provided the testimony on the steep slopes. Nothing changes with regard to those three variances, which are, if you want to lump them into one, but of the three categories, 15% to 20%, 20% to 25, and greater than 25, those numbers calculate out originally consistent with this plan, which is A2 as originally submitted. And that's largely because majority of our disturbance is around that office building where you had man-made created slopes through the construction of that facility. It's not natural man-made slopes that we're disturbing with, with the application. From a major soil-moving permit application, we did submit that. We saw a letter back from the town engineer addressed to the board, some fees and some additional operational things that we can all agree to comply with. The rough cut to fill, as we had submitted, is about 13,500 cubic yards. Dirt moving on the site, it's about an import of just over 7,000 cubic yards for the property.
And the route?
I would anticipate a majority of the deliveries are coming from 287-80 corridor to Smith Road to Jefferson to the site, just by virtue of where the dirt's coming. There were some open items as a contractor would come on board that we would certainly fill out and coordinate with, with the town engineer for the exact route operations.
What do you anticipate for the deep foundation for these sound walls?
So I, I think you might be alluding to a comment within your report where we have a drainage pipe through the area. So there are gonna be a couple areas where the sound wall will be structurally designed so we'll make sure that those shop drawings and design details make its way to your office as well as the town engineer for review. But in some of those instances, you'll have to work through the type of haunch design over the drainage pipe or any other element that's, you know, in that workable zone of that wall.
All right. Mr. Neely?
I don't recall from the previous meeting back in September or October, but are you planting any solar panels on the roof?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
We have our EV car charging spaces.
Yes. By law, I guess, right?
By law.
Yeah.
Mr. Napolitano?
Yes, thank you. One more, sorry. All right. So I think we've spoken a little bit of this before. As firefighters change hands, all right, they forget to go in the south entrance and they go in the north entrance and the fire is in the eastern part of the building. And they're driving in and they see that wall there.
Yeah.
Is there at least gonna be an access door there for him to run through or her to run through and just at least get hooked into the fire hydrant or they're gonna have to turn all the way back around and go all the way back around again?
So what, this was some of the initial coordination we had done with the Fire Subcode Official, hence a lot of the mechanisms for signing the fire access point to this building and making sure that that's directed to this, this area. If it were to get around here, it would have a mechanism to turn around. You would be able to get to this corner, but if it had to get to the rear yard, we wanted to make sure that it was signed, you know, accordingly from Jefferson Road so it knew where to turn in.
And remember that the firemen, and only because fire prevention is one of my departments and the fire districts are under my, they, they visit these sites so they know where the access are and things. They'll, they'll visit the site and become familiar and they know where the lights are and where the hookups are.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, my members of the board?
I had a question. What are the new variances that are being proposed from the prior?
So really, the only change in variance is the front yard, so it's the 60 feet versus the required 100-foot. And that is in lieu of now not needing the residential buffer variance, either for parking or a structure. And technically, since we have to move this existing sign, you're only allowed one freestanding sign on the property, two were previously approved, we're just moving this, relocating it in kind to be at that 20-foot required setback at the driveway.
And Mr. Cali, did you notice for the front yard variance?
No, the original notice stands. The notice was carried. These are amendments post-filing, so this is subject to Lacy v. Paulmark. We think this stands the test. Notice is not required.
But this is a new variance that's being created by...
It's a new condition, correct. With planned supplements post-hearing.
And the new fence fence.
And yes, yes. As my, as my teammates are reminding me, the wall.
So a few were no change, a few were eliminated, and two new ones. And to be hyper-technical, the sign, Ben might be right, I think in an abundance of caution, we would seek a variance for the secondary freestanding sign to the extent it is relocated, even though it's being relocated outside of the setback in improved condition.
And what was the, the site that you stated that why you don't need to re-notice?
The settlement case, Lacy v. Paulmark.
Okay, you can continue today. I don't know if you'll be able to finish the application today.
I don't think we're finishing tonight, no. This is our first of probably four witnesses.
Okay.
Okay, I was gonna ask, sometimes they put out the notice saying "and any other."
Oh, that's always in there. That's the appellate division's approved catch-all. That's been in our first notice. That's still in there, that, you know, what they refer to in our parlance as the shotgun blast catch-all. Any, you know, you know, other variances or relief and approval that may be required during the course of the public hearing.
Yep.
And that stands the test as well.
So actually, another question came up out of that discussion. And maybe you're not the right expert, I don't know. Are you gonna have an architect testify?
We will, yeah. You might not see him tonight, Gordon, but, but our architect is here and will be up after...
Because I'm curious why the building has to be as big as it is and you can't eliminate both the front yard and rear yard variance.
Talking about shrinking the structure size is what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay.
I'm curious about what, you know, is there a magic equation to the building?
I think there is from, from, from a utility standpoint in the market. I think there is definitely a sweet spot of number of usable square footage for this type of use. Our architect testified more to that, but, but there certainly is a market demand for this size of a box, if you will, as opposed to alternative sides.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, Mr. Cali, I mean, I really appreciate your, your knowledge of the law. I'll, I'll wait for an expert to tell me that. Thanks.
You got it.
All right. And I'm not sure if this is you or gonna be somebody else, but what's that wall gonna look like?
Our architect's gonna talk about that, but the color of that wall is anticipated to be compatible with, you know, the building color schemes and you'll see that on the elevations.
Okay.
All right, Mr. DeDich?
Do you have any idea, is this going to be refrigerated warehouse or a dry warehouse?
I don't know that at this time.
If it's a refrigerator, then you will have tractor-trailers who's running the tractor-trailer non-stop.
I don't think we...
If it's loading at the time. More concern is the sound. Our concern is, major concern is the neighborhoods over there. So if it's a refrigeration warehouse...
It's definitely not a cold storage facility whatsoever.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you know.
Yeah, okay, so maybe I did...
Yeah, because if the tractor-trailer comes, they're just standing there and running it.
Yeah, no.
The engine keeps running, it's, I don't know how well is your sound barrier wall?
He, our acoustical engineers run all the models, so he'll be able to talk through about that a little bit with the trucks, the trips, sitting in the dock, not attenuation piece.
All right. We're done up here, so I'm gonna ask if there are any members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony, if you can come up here and identify yourself and your location and residence and ask your question.
Sure. Good evening. My name is David Dockery, D-O-C-K-E-R-Y. I'm from the law firm of Becker &amp; Polyakov. I am legal counsel for the Masturbator Homeowners Association, which is the rear yard neighbor. I just have, just a minor question. As to the fire subcode memo, I think we're looking at the January 25th. There is a handwritten notation at the end of the employee parking lot that, to my understanding, looks like they are requiring a portion of that to actually be paved. And could you just clarify what the status is and what the resolution of that particular corner is?
Yeah, that, that comment is generally pertaining, if I'm back on A3, southeastern corner of the building. So we have provided a mechanism for the fire truck to turn around on the eastern side of the building. There was a request and we do have some excess parking where 78 parking spaces are required, 99 are proposed, where there was a mechanism that was requested if the truck needed to turn around right in that location via K-turn or maneuverability, we will work something in this, in this space due to our, you know, our excess of parking at the corner.
So would you extend the asphalt surface beyond the back of the building?
We would not. We are, we're gonna hold any type of building or pavement surface at that 150 line.
Okay. And at the end of the parking lot, will there be some sort of collars that the trucks can knock down or, you know, signal that that's really only emergency access at that point?
That's an element that we're looking to incorporate, the signage that directs the fire apparatus to this, not only this access point, but from that point forward, it would be emergency vehicles only.
All right, thank you. As your testimony, getting back to the orientation of the building, it's my understanding, and if you could just clarify, if, if there was to be a rotation hypothetically with the truck loading base in the front, and I'm sorry to put you through this, when you were considering that, if you were to put the employee parking in the back, let's say we're just turning this, right, exactly, what would be the variance required then in the rear setback?
We would still be in a very similar position. If we, if we took this plan and turned it in kind and we positioned the truck and trailer operation, then the building, then the required parking spaces, we're still looking at an encroachment for the limit of the parking, for the, basically the front of the building facing that eastern property line that was very similar to what we had previously proposed from a distance perspective.
Would that still be further away from the property line than the current office building?
I think subjective to how many parking spaces we propose, I think it would be a slight improvement from the 61.9 feet.
That's currently there?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And as far as the buffering and landscaping to the rear, is there any plan to prioritize, this may be getting ahead of the game here, but to prioritize that buffering in the initial phase of construction so as to provide buffering during the raising and whether practically possible to kind of minimize construction noise and activity from Masturbator?
I'm, I'm sure that's something that can certainly be considered in the construction sequence, particularly since where these evergreens are being installed is actually already behind the current existing backer curb of some of that parking. So if it has the opportunity and the season is, is supportive of that, it's not middle of July, I think that's something that could certainly go in as an earlier phase.
Okay, and I don't know if you'll be testifying about this later or if you've already been testified to, but I did see a comment in one of the planning memos about lighting height. I think currently it was specified at 25 feet and possibility of lowering that. Has that been considered or will someone else?
Yeah, that, that was, so it's 25 feet everywhere. There was a comment to lower in some of the employee parking areas and that was something that we were agreeing to.
Okay. Great. I think that's all the questions I have.
Thanks.
Any other members of the public have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Is there up? As they would say in the game shows, come on down. If you could identify yourself.
I'm Meryl Doncher-Sills-Cummins-Gross, representing Maun USA, which is the owner of the property to the left as you look at the diagram, which is A3. We will say that we like this design that has the loading away from our headquarters building. I have one question, though. How is the parking calculated since it appears to be based on employment? And as I understand it, this is a spec building unless you have the numbers of employees already. We're just concerned if there's overflow, there's a very short, very narrow setback to our property and that would be a likely place. So I'm just, if someone can explain how they wish that.
Yeah, so we have conservatively, from an industry perspective, assumed 80 to 100 employees in this building. That, like I said, is relatively conservative because the parking, as you've alluded to, is a function of number of employees, number of managers, and then associated components of those managers. and then associated components of those managers. If you break that down, assuming 80 to 100, and we'll start with the 100, that requires 78 parking spaces. We're at 99 with the latest plan. So conservatively parked from a building of this size, even if it were to be two tenants across the board.
Okay, that's what, there's no square footage parking?
No, it's a function of employees, managers, per the code.
But actually, I think what it said was, if I read it, it was managers, and I'm not sure what that definition is, and then visitor parking based on the number of managers, and then employees. So that includes warehouse employees as well as office employees, or is everyone in the office a manager? I was having a hard time figuring out. Do you understand?
Yeah, it's an interesting calculation because it's one space for every two employees, one space for every manager, and one visitor space for every 10 managers. So we've kind of worked through some scenarios to make sure that the 99 parking spaces is well above and beyond, you know, what we had anticipated 80 to 100 employees. Whether you break that out as, you know, a majority employees with a few managers, or even in this calculation, which would be more conservative, 30 managers. So we actually, you know, we're a little bit more conservative on that tabulation as well.
How many spaces would you be, and I know you're getting credit for 103 with the EV, but the, if you were to have to lose some of the spaces to accommodate the fire code, what are we, how many are you talking about losing?
Four to five in that area.
So maybe 95 spaces?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there a backup? I mean, I assume you don't want to cap that number of employees. So what's the fallback? Would both, would truck parking become, if the number actually, once you have people there, is higher?
Mm-hmm.
So they're not in our parking lot. Where is the alternative?
Well, I think with our approval, and Mr. Calley can correct me if I'm wrong, if we're gonna say there's 100 employees, as this building takes tenancy, if that employee requirement were to go up through either of those tenants coming in, that would be an item that would have to be re-looked at from a zoning perspective.
You understand, as I said, we like this layout, but that was the only concern that we saw because we just international calculation for parking.
You erred on the conservative side at all turns in your calculation, Ben. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Any other members of the public have questions on this testimony at this time? I suspect, Mr. Calley, what do you anticipate getting done tonight?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
I don't remember from September. The hours of operation, is that an eight-hour-a-day operation, or is it multiple shifts?
It's, at this point, as there are no tenants, I think it's anticipated that this building might run around the clock, which the code permits, so it's likely to be shift workers around the clock.
If that's the case, then the 100 workers you're projecting wouldn't all be there at the same time.
That's right. That's exactly right.
There'd be different shifts, so there'd be fewer at each shift.
Yeah, you'll have voids in the spaces. Some are coming and going. There'll always be spaces. That's, and we understand Ms. Gancher's concern as a neighbor, and the code was applied conservatively, but, you know, and I know you understand, Mr. Piero, and the board does, if this didn't work for the applicant, it's not working for the board either, the interests are sort of aligned in that respect. Because if this parking doesn't work, it's bad for us too, and it's a big problem for us too. So this was, again, conservatively estimated in the field, and you're right, you're gonna have empty spaces. People are leaving, the next batch showing up.
Okay, thank you.
What do you anticipate doing tonight?
We're gonna finish, Mr. Chairman. Our acoustic expert, I think, might be a decent amount of time on board questions and maybe public questions. Our acoustic expert is going to be our next witness after Mr. Crowder concludes. I don't really have, you know, high hopes we're gonna get much beyond that, but if we did, we'd expect a brief recall of our traffic engineer at that point, and we might very well conclude, I think, it's the board's pleasure to conclude testimony by 10:00, 10:30, is that right?
If you go beyond 10 o'clock, you have to send off a pizza.
That's right.
That order now.
I'm in.
Is there a desire by members of the board to take a break?
Motion for a break.
All right. We're gonna break at this moment. So ordered.
I'll make the pizza phone call, Mr. Chairman.
The planning board meeting for February 5th, 2024. Norm, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. DeDich.
Yeah.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Chairman Dittens.
Here.
All right.
That's how I do it, yeah.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. So our second witness for the evening, Norm Doti of Russell Acoustics. We'll get Mr. Doti sworn in, qualified, and then we'll be off to the races with him.
If you raise your hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and provide your business address.
I'm Norman Doti, D-O-T-T-I, and I'm principal with Russell Acoustics in Forker River.
I know you've testified before this board, previously, Norm, years ago, but for the benefit of the board and the record, your background credentials, qualifications, and licensing, if you would, briefly?
Yes, I've been in this room many times, probably starting back almost 40 years ago. I've done multiple projects in Parsippany. Last one I remember was in this room for UPS and their sound barrier, that sort of thing. So I'm a consulting acoustical engineer. I practiced as such for 52 years. Clients, I have a bachelor's degree in engineering from Stevens, a master's from NJIT. I have a dozen postgraduate courses in acoustics. I taught for 10 years at the OSHA Training Institute in Illinois, where I developed their advanced noise control course. I taught industrial noise control for B&amp;K instruments. They're a worldwide acoustical instrumentation manufacturer. Projects include warehouses, conference rooms, schools, churches and synagogues, shopping centers, private homes.
The list goes on.
I've been doing this for 52 years. It starts to blur together after a while.
Your license is, are you currently in good standing? And then go back to what you were gonna say.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
No actions against me. And I should mention, too, I'm also just reappointed by the governor. I'm a member of the State Noise Control Council that writes the regulations for the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
And wrote the model noise ordinance, which you adopted a number of years ago.
Mr. Chair? I don't see any questions on the...
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry. Did, you did say he's professional, you're a professional engineer, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And technically a planner, and also board certified by the Institute of Noise Control Engineers by exam.
They'll be testifying here tonight in this capacity as an engineer with an expert in acoustic engineering and design.
Understood, yeah. I'm just asking about the professional license they say.
Fair enough. Counsel, you have it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Norm, before we cut you loose, just a few things to confirm. You're familiar with the property, the surrounding area, the intended use, and the plans that are on file with the board?
Yes.
Okay. And you've had an opportunity to prepare an analysis and render some conclusions and proposed implementations based upon acoustic impact from this site with the abutting neighbors in mind, is that right?
Correct.
So if you would, Norm, take us through the benefit of your analysis, your proposed development, and your conclusions you've drawn from it.
We were retained to look at the sound issues, and in particular, the residential area nearby. And I went through a number of iterations in the study. We had discussions. There were changes made to the building based on my comments, and that's how we wound up with the current configuration. I'll show you what we did. So obviously, we can't go out there and measure the operation because it doesn't exist, which is not an unusual situation.
And we're gonna start by marking these, Norm, sequentially. Counsel, I think A4 we're up to?
Yes, I believe so.
Norm, so we're gonna mark that first exhibit as A4 with today's date. Does it have a title on there, Norm, for the record?
Well, what it, this is a...
Or describe it for the record?
Sure. It is a sound level contour map. And this particular one, description, trailer, tractor, tractor-trailers into and out of loading dock area, 16-foot sound barrier, first for listener.
Thank you.
Is what we're describing here. So what we do is take the, take CAD file of the project and surrounding areas and use that along with information on the trucks and their sound levels, distances, ground cover, buildings and their heights. All those factors go into it, and then they're put into a commercial system called Sound Plan. And from that, we can do calculations based on, specifically, it is an ISO standard, ISO 9613-2, which describes propagation of sound outdoors interacting with the sound sources, buildings, foliage, ground cover, all those things factor into it. It's ISO, it's an international standard used for this purpose, and that's what the Sound Plan program implements. So all those factors went in there, into the model. And we initially looked at, as you're aware, earlier building, and if we didn't do something about it, there would be a problem. By problem, I mean the following. There is a state noise regulation, NJAC 7:29, which sets limits, to keep it somewhat simple, sets limits for daytime, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and nighttime, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, on sound levels that are within a receiving property. In other words, a site can make as much noise as it wants on its own site. It's what goes to the neighbors that counts. The limit daytime is 65, 65 dB-A, 50 at night. And it is a performance standard, so as was mentioned earlier, they have to meet it. And what happens if they don't meet it? Well, if there's a complaint, then they, a noise control officer is the proper term, can come out when called and take the necessary measurements, and if they're over, they can get a notice of violation out of the thing. They have time to abate that. If they don't, they can get another one. And after a short period of time, if they don't remedy it, it can get very nasty. There's fines of significant, I don't remember the exact number because it changed recently. It would, it's at least $2,000 a day. So it amounts up there. So the regulation has some teeth in it. Now, you are one of the, a few, a lot of towns throughout the state have not adopted their own noise ordinance, or if they have them, it's something that they cooked up themselves. And the state regulation says municipality can have its own ordinance if it is approved by NJDEP. The only thing NJDEP will approve is something called the Model Noise Ordinance. For the purposes of this application, it and the state ordinance, state regulation are the same. You originally had a noise ordinance of some sort, and it was disapproved by the state. It was subsequent, you submitted another one a number of years later, and it is approved. If you go onto the appropriate DEP site where they list the status of municipalities that have submitted ordinances, Parsippany shows up as approved. Yours, your, and the thing, the only thing that the DEP will approve is the Model Noise Ordinance, which has the same limits. So in complying with the state limits, we're also complying with Parsippany limits. That is background. So after experimenting, what when we do, I heard a question earlier about, well, how do we determine the wall, and height, width, and all that stuff? I know where I want to put a wall to be the most effective. The question is, how long should it be, and how high should it be? So as we go through an iterative process, looking at different heights and positions and sort, we can see, for example, you can see on this one at the, at the top here, the sound wall is this blue L-shaped drawing here. You can notice here that the sound is, I use the term oozing. It wraps around the edges of the barrier. That's typical, and that's one reason why you can't just say, well, if Mr. Napolitano is the noise source, I want to block it. I can just take it over, just so I just block you. But sound's gonna come around the corner, ooze around there. So it often has to extend further than just a quick look, like someone who doesn't understand this might assume. I don't want to need to block the edge and that, but. So we have to extend it far enough so that when it oozes around, it doesn't get the apartments. Likewise, on height, I could build it real long, but a four-foot-high sound, or six-foot-high, or eight-foot-high sound barrier is not tall enough to stop the noise. Even if the sound source is low, like it really is on a tractor-trailer or truck moving around in a lot, it's the, it's the engine noise that really makes the sound. I might just block it, but it has to be tall enough so that, again, it's just as it sound oozes around the sides, it's gonna ooze up over the top. So you can say, well, somebody's eight feet high or so, it only has to be nine feet high, and we're good. No, that's not true. Another variable is, and this I heard from another one of you folks, the question, I think it might have been the engineer, about height. And I love that question. So the height of the receiver or the listener relative to the sound source height and the barrier, and the distances, relative distances between them, all figure into it. So you just can't look and say, well, I'll put a barrier here and make it X feet tall, and it'll solve the noise problem. So here, for these apartments, when I looked at them, it's very obvious, you have second floor levels up there to deal with. When you go higher up, you lose some effectiveness of a barrier. Normally, address what I call head height, a listener. When a compliance person goes out there, especially at night, because we have to meet the standard at night, too. They're standing in the backyard, they have a sound level meter, they're holding the thing up, they take a measurement, and I use that as nominally about five and a half feet tall. That's a height, and we designed for that so that that's effective. But now we have the second floor, and we're up around 15 feet above grade. And so it's possible that you could actually, standing up on the second floor, be able to look directly at the trucks, because the barrier isn't tall enough. And if you do that, then the effectiveness of the barrier falls off very quickly as you get closer and closer to peeking over the edge. So we concluded that in the design. So we really designed this not for the first floor, but the second floor, because that's the more critical measure.
So we'll mark this one down, Norm.
Okay.
A5 with today's date. I imagine it has a similar, but maybe different title that we can give it for the record?
The red line, this is by the apartments.
Norm, what can we call A5?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just differentiate it. That's okay.
It's, again, is a sound level contour map. The description here, tractor-trailers in and out of loading dock area, as we said before, 16-foot sound barrier, as we said before, second floor listener. That's the difference.
Perfect, thank you.
Everything else is the same on these two, except the height of the receiver. Okay? The red line, so you know more about what you're looking at here, and here, is the 50 dB-A contour line. So closer into that, as it gets from the red into yellow and other hot kind of colors, those are above 50. In the, in the truck area here, we're looking at levels around 80 dB-A. Beyond the red line, as we start getting into the greens, those are sound levels that are below 50, the nighttime limit. Again, when it all comes down to it, usually for a warehouse, we just designed for the nighttime operation, the 50 dB-A limit. So if you look at the ground floor level, then, over by the homes, resulting sound levels are down around, depending on where you are, 40 to 45 dB-A. On the first floor, it's much closer to the 40 than it is to 45. You have more shielding from the barrier. The barrier is what's stopping the sound propagation. So in both cases, both out, both elevations, we meet the nighttime criteria by five or more dB-A. About the barriers, we're always asked, well, what's it made out of? And the simple answer, it can be made of all sorts of stuff. You stop sound propagation with mass. So you have to have something solid. You can't, you can't make a sound barrier out of chicken wire. It has to be solid. On paper, two, two layers of three-quarter-inch plywood would do the job acoustically. I have yet to find a board that would approve- I have yet to find a board that would approve two layers of three-quarter-inch plywood. But, that gives you a sense of how massive, or not all that massive it has to be, to provide the necessary sound attenuation. Once you start adding more, because sometimes it happens, somebody says, okay, you're going to make this thing out of four inches of concrete, let's say. Well, if that works, then eight inches of concrete, or 12 inches of concrete, you've got to be even better, right? And the answer is, no. Because it's the dimensions of, once the barrier is solid enough, and has the necessary dimensions, height and length, to do its job, making the barrier more massive does not help the acoustics at all. You say, well, gee, Norm, the sound barriers along the highway are these big, massive things, and I guess it might be considered an editorial opinion, but that's the way New Jersey likes to build them. Last time I checked, state's cost per mile of a sound barrier was twice the national average. But, anyway. So, what we're using here, is a commercial product, we built them out of timber, so the state of Connecticut builds most of its sound barriers out of wood. New Jersey has built them out of wood. Now, wood, obviously you want it to be pressure-treated, the joints have to be dealt with, so they use a tongue-and- groove or ship-lap joint, so you don't get gaps in there. There's other things that are done to it. But, a lot of them are built out of wood, they're built out of metal panels, masonry, poured-in-place, tilt-up concrete, all sorts of things you can build them out of. They just have to have enough mass. In this case, some people wonder about using, like, a landscape fence, you know, the white, six-foot, eight-foot-high fence. Aside from the height issue, there's just not enough mass there. Those things are really pretty lightweight, they're hollow, these are the ones I've experienced. So, what's the answer here? What we're proposing using is, for a particular reason, is a product called, from AIL Sound Wall. It is, if you look at it in cross-section, it's about four inches thick, but it's hollow, and it's PVC, moderately heavy, and these are tongue-and- groove, and they stack up like you were stacking tongue-and- groove boards up. In this, in the particular one here, it's called the Model, is the Silent Protector. Sounds like the Lone Ranger. It's hollow, as I mentioned, and the one side has a whole bunch of slits cut in it, and then inside of it is a mineral wool filling, and that acts as an absorber. So, you have the mass stopping the transmission of sound, you have the absorber that absorbs sound, and what absorption does is prevents reflection. So, we have, on the inside of the barrier here, we have a reflective surface, think of it, I'm sorry, an absorptive surface. The other side is a smooth surface. They also make the version of product that's smooth on both sides. Why do we call for that? Because we wanted to add absorption into this cul-de-sac kind of thing here, to cut down on the sound bouncing around inside. Because when it bounces around on the inside, it's bouncing off the walls of the warehouse and sort, and raises the sound level over here a bit. So, putting it in, we could make it work without that, but it's better at a minor cost increment to use the absorptive type, but that goes on the inside, not the outside. And when we do all that, and that's all in the model and the calculations, then projected levels are well under the sound level limits that we have to deal with, day and night, for both first and second floor. I think that's it.
So, you said a lot, Norm, and we'll turn it over to the board in a minute, but just to sort of summarize the conclusion, you've designed this to successfully meet the more stringent nighttime standards of 50 decibel levels at the measurement point, and this complies with the state regs and in parallel with municipal regulations in total, yes?
And at both the first floor and second floor level.
Right, okay. Mr. Chair?
Members of the board, Mr. DeCaro. Norm, I had a question for you, but your drawing answers the question for me.
That's good.
If the applicant had rotated the building 90 degrees counterclockwise, like I recommended, all that dark green, which is much lower sound, would be facing the residence?
Not with, well, you have...
All of that would be facing...
Okay.
Emily Drive. And you wouldn't need any sound barrier, the building would do the whole job for us.
I'd have to see exactly where the trucks drive around up here. Soon as you poke your head around...
The red is where the trucks drive, your red, all the noise.
Well, it's red because that's where the trucks drive.
That's right.
Right.
That's right. If you rotate the building 90 degrees counterclockwise, so, the trucks are facing Jefferson Road, and all that green is facing the residence on Emily Drive, okay? You would not need your sound barrier, the building does it for you, at a much lower rate of noise. Would you agree to that?
I would potentially agree to. I not looked at that scenario, I've not modeled that scenario at all.
Your building shows it.
Build...
Look at it this way, the red is where the trucks are making all the noise. Do you agree to that?
That's where, that's where the trucks operate...
That's where they are, and that's where they're making all the noise, that we're concerned about.
That's the sound source, that's right.
Okay. Now, on the other end of the building is green. What does that interpret for you?
That's a, this is the sound level over you.
What does green mean?
The sound level over in this area is projected to be 35, 30 to 35.
Okay. So, if they had rotated the building the way I suggested, 90 degrees counterclockwise, then the residents would get a sound level of 35, with no sound barrier?
If I may, if you look at the entrance here, and trucks operating up here, you picture this now rotated, now, look at how the sound, when there's no impediment to it, comes down this far before it hits 50. So, I think it's, I don't know, because I haven't modeled it, but you would have, on each side of the building, you would have fingers of sound coming down, again, rotate this thing 90 degrees, you'd have sound coming down this side and this side. Whether that would be an issue or not, I don't know, but it's not, and too attively obvious, that rotating the building and not having to do anything else, and having or not having sound issues, I don't know. I can't say, because I didn't model it. There may be other reasons why it can't be modeled.
Your building, your diagram shows the red is the noisy trucks, right? On the other side of the building, from that red, is green, and green means you're not getting the sound. I don't care which drawing you look at, it's the same answer.
If you can picture the building this way, notice what's coming down along this side of the building here, and you'd have the same thing on this side of the building up the top here. Now, what that runs into...
But, the residents are on the green side, when you tilt it over, do you know where the residents are?
Yes, sir, I do.
The residents would be fully protected on Emily Drive.
It is not obvious to me that that would work. It may be better, it may be terrific, but it's still, there's a, looking at this, there's still a possibility, a finite possibility, that you would still have sound coming along both sides. It would be green over a big part of this, but it could also be in the red on the ends of that. This is the scenario that was laid out, and it works. It clearly works. It's a good 5 dB A under, and I might say, I did not go out there and measure sound, but I've been doing this for a few years, and I think it's probable that the ambient sound level is above 50. If it was 60, it wouldn't surprise me, but in all fairness, that's not regulated by the state. That's not sound that gets, existing sound in an area cannot be held against a project. This regulation applies to the sound that a project makes, not the other ambient sound. I did this project on a warehouse in South Jersey about two years ago, and in that instance, we set up some environmental sound monitors around the area. There's no construction, it's an empty field. We set up monitors and measured over three days the existing sound levels. At the hearing, somebody got up and said, in effect, this is going to be terrible, I'm going to hear all these trucks, et cetera, et cetera, and it turned out that in his, at his back property line, facing the project, is one of the locations where we had taken measurements. And I said, sir, we measured at that location, the ambient sound levels, right now, with no construction, 90% of the time, existing sounds out there are above what the site itself is allowed to emit. So, ambient sounds are a factor, if you're this close to Jefferson, sort of. I'm just saying, I don't think the existing sound now, with no construction there, no warehouse, none of the trucks, is down below 50 dB A now. It just doesn't make any sense.
But it will be, as you designed it.
From this project, yes. Now, it may be, if it was 55 or 60 out there ambient, we're not going to suck up all the sound, we can't do that, physics doesn't work that way, but we're not going to contribute a significant, or even in that situation, a measurable increase to the sound levels.
Just one quick question, did you model what the sound level would be the residences' without the sound wall? I'm just curious, just to see how...
Way back in the beginning, I did. I think I said that, without doing something about it here, then it would be over.
How much over, I'm just curious? I'm just curious how effective the sound wall is.
10 to 15 dB A louder.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony? Mr. Canjiano, do you have...
Yeah, thanks for the testimony, it's interesting. So, the, I see you modeled maybe 150 feet to the north of the property. Those, yes. So, the Emily Place properties extend pretty far northward.
Is that up this way?
Yeah, so, if you extend it, your model, what kind of effect, does it, does the sound decibels diminish over the distance, or are they, is it, because it's just open air, are they experiencing the same noise levels as at the property line? I'm trying to understand what those other properties, you know, kind of diagonally to the north are experiencing.
As you, as distance increases, the sound level decreases. You're spreading out the energy over a bigger area. So, within a few thousand feet, the, there are other effects that can further reduce it, but they're really not doing much within 1,000 or 2,000 feet.
Well, I think these properties, I don't know if it's 1,000 foot, but they continue to go north.
Yeah, so, you're going to get less sound, because you're going further away from it, because, and the big factor is the distance, not any fancy, what's called excess attenuation due to molecular relaxation of the air molecules. There's a bunch of things that go into it, I'd say, but you can ignore them below a few thousand feet.
And just, could you, I wanted to sort of, what locations you had, the 40 and 45 decibels? What's the decibel reading at the nearest homes, at their bedroom window, let's say, second floor?
Let's see, it would be one of these two, up here on the north end of the road of homes here, about, let's see, there's 45. Around 45.
Okay. You have the...
You have these, and you look at this avenue, so, but that's about 45.
And then, 45, how does that relate to someone who's sleeping and waking them up? Is that something that...
The state's 50 criterion is, was showed, you go, you go all the way back and look at the history of the noise regulation, and their justification on some of the, on the two levels that came up with. 65 is based on normal conversational level, two people standing normal distance apart, talking in a normal voice. Obviously, I have a mic, and you're probably raising your mic, but that's a sense of what is 65, it's considered normal conversational level. The 50 is based on sleep disturbance, and that's based on an outside noise level of 50, to make it quiet enough inside that it is not sleep disturbance. Coincidentally, 50 is the level that HUD, U.S. Housing and Urban Development, uses as its noise criteria when you do noise studies, and it's one of the things we do. Developer wants to put, well, there's one up, where are we, relative to Haiti, okay? I think I'm in the right direction.
Olive?
No, the one out, just out 80 a little bit, there's a residential development going up there, we did a HUD study there, and in some areas, closer to the intersection of 287 and 80, they had some noise issues where the background noise was above 50. So, they have to do things, HUD says they have to do things in the way of windows and other improvements to lower the interior sound levels. So, 50 is, and we're under that, so, by those criteria, this would...
You're at 50 on the outside.
This would meet, but that's how it's, they measure, again, they don't have a building they can go measure, although I have had HUD come back and say, okay, you did this and that, prove it, that we have, we met the desired target interior level, which I believe is 30, 35, something like that. So, we actually set up monitors inside some of the units to measure, to show that the sound was, in fact, low enough by the HUD standard. But, it's based on outside, because that's what you can measure.
And then, just a more layperson question, you had mentioned the UPS site, which is right down the road on Jefferson. I remember that application, that wall height was 30 feet or so.
30, maybe 32, something like, in that realm, yes.
That was considerably higher wall.
That's essentially twice the height of this one.
Why is this wall now only need to be 16 feet versus that other location?
Because of the geometry and the distances. As you get, if you can picture a wall right across here, and there's sound over there, and I'm the listener, receiver over here, everything else being equal, as I get closer to the wall, and I'm also getting closer to the source, so you'd say, well, gee, I'm closer to the source, it ought to be louder, but I'm also more in the shadow, it's called the shadow zone, of the wall, so it's more effective. So, you can actually, when you have a wall involved, as you get closer to it, it gets quieter. So, here, the distances are different than they were for precipity, yeah, for UPS.
Thank you. Other members of the board have questions? Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you, just amazing graphics there, I really appreciate them. Just out of curiosity, what if the, your wall was angled in? How much would that make? Would it matter at all?
No. It's the, look at the source, the top of the wall, and then the receiver. So, if you'd start angling around, you're maybe positioning things a little closer to one side than the other by a few feet, but it's not suddenly, some magic thing happens because of the bend, that we're reflecting the sound back and canceling and all that stuff.
Other members?
Actually, one more, one last question.
Okay, Gordon.
Okay, this is probably a no-brainer, and it's probably already there. The sound you modeled for the trucks, that included the backup cameras, right? Or, not the backup cameras, the backup beepers, right?
Not directly, the back, number one, is over-the-road tractor-trailers, very few of them actually have backup alarms. Number two is the backup alarms are comparable to the sound levels that we're using for the truck itself.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thanks.
So, for these models, you were looking particularly at the spillover for the residential properties?
I'm sorry, say it again.
For these models, you were looking particularly at the spillover sound for the residential properties, right?
Yes, you can see the, what's called calculation areas, where you see colored stuff. We didn't do calculations for levels across Jefferson Road, or those other things. The closest residential receivers, to my knowledge, are these homes right down here.
Are there separate requirements for the commercial uses on either side?
Daytime 65.
And this meets those, too?
Yes, the 65, I mentioned, is the dashed red line, let's see if I can find one here. It's right across the top here, the sound comes past here, you can see a dashed red line, that highlights the 65.
Okay.
I found that with commercial, usually what... I found that with commercial, usually what happens, we, we do the calculation for it, but everybody pretty much ignores it, because when you have two commercial operations next to each other, okay, so I'm making over 65 at your property, but there's a good chance you're making over 65 at my property too. And, you know, if you get me, I'm going to get you, so everybody just lets it lie.
All right. So, for members of the board, for the members of the public who have questions on this witness at this testimony at this time.
Hi, again, David Dockery of Becker &amp; Polly Co. on behalf of Maszpr. Mr. Dotty, thank you for your testimony. It was, it was very, very informative. However, I just have a procedural question to the board attorney. Were these exhibits submitted prior to tonight's hearing?
They were not.
No, they were not, and they were entered into the record tonight.
Okay. And will there be a written report submitted subsequent to tonight's testimony based on Mr. Dotty's testimony, or just oral presentation tonight?
With the pleasure of the board, if the board and their experts recommend a written submission, Mr. Dotty can certainly prepare one, but to date, it's been just a live expert testimony that you heard tonight.
Okay, thank you. With regards to the, I believe it's called an AIL sound wall?
That's the manufacturer.
Yes, that's the manufacturer. What is the life expectancy of, of that product?
I would say 30-plus years.
Is that based on your knowledge of the product and review of technical specs?
Their, their brochure, literature, tech specs, same place we get the acoustical data from.
Okay. Just to clarify earlier, you said that you did not measure the actual ambient decibel levels?
Correct.
Okay. So, your graphics are based merely on, purely on modeling?
Measuring, the graphics are model. You wouldn't put the ambient in there because, number one, you don't have enough points to generate contour map. If we did half a dozen points around the community, this, each one of these models has, I think the number is around 5,900 points in it, so it's not practical to measure that many points. And, most significantly, when it comes to compliance, the ambient doesn't matter. This is what, the 50 is what the site is limited to putting out, even when the ambient is higher. You get to the point where you can't measure a site because the ambient is too high.
In, 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 well, let me, let me just ask you a question, and I apologize, I'm not an acoustic engineer.
I'm not a lawyer.
Fair enough. When, can you describe it all as far as character of sound aesthetically? An engine humming at, you know, for, let's say you're at Maszpr, and an engine is humming at 50 decibels versus the beeping of the trucks at 50 decibels? Does your modeling, my first question is, was your modeling based purely on decibel level, or also was there any analysis of the character of sound?
Well, the, the character of the sound, you look at the different frequencies that make up a sound, that's in there. We, we talk about the results in terms of dBA, because that's the principal metric that the state and the town noise regulation use. There's actually, there's a frequency breakdown in there. So, when we do the modeling, we're not just saying, well, the truck makes x dBA at 50 feet, and let's go from there, which really, the model is saying, okay, it makes this much sound at this frequency, this much sound at this frequency, and so on, across the spectrum. The total of all that, in the, in the case of the 50 line, is 50, but the breakdown is still in there. So, if we have a sound source, two sound sources, each one makes 50 dBA at some reference distance, they can sound different. They're made up, one could be low-frequency sound at 50, and the other could be high-frequency sound at 50. They sound different, but they have the same dBA. The, the state regulation, the town ordinance is based on the overall sound, not, not, I like this sound, I don't like that sound.
Would it be your professional opinion that it's aesthetically more pleasing to listen to the low rumble of a semi-truck at 50 decibels versus a truck backing up in a high-frequency beeping noise at 50 decibels?
No, I don't, I don't think I'd have a preference myself. I should maybe preface that way, saying, my, my ex likes Italian opera, and I like classic country.
But, but, but you seem, but, but, I mean, just, just to hammer home my point, is that it's, it's aesthetically different listening to one frequency of sound versus another?
I think it's much more than just the frequency of the sound.
Or characteristic.
I don't think, you know, counsel, and, Mr. Chairman, I don't think the witness can answer this. Aesthetically pleasing is going into a lot of subjectivity. All the testimony has been wholly objective, mathematical and statistical, and we're talking about geometry and points of measurement. And Mr. Dotty said it several times now, how frequency is measured? It's measured in terms of decibel levels, doesn't matter what the sound is, we're measuring it in terms of how loud the boom is, and he says it complies, and he has no preference, personally. I don't know the subjectivity of the beep-beep versus a humming of an engine makes a difference, and Mr. Dotty already indicated he doesn't have a preference of one over the other. So, I don't know where we're going with more questions of the same length.
I'll, I'll reserve it for later comments. Thank you.
All right. Other other members of the public who have questions on this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I guess you have enough time to present one more witness.
If the board's okay with that, we'll be very brief and direct with our recall of our traffic.
What is the consensus of the board? It sounds like we would probably, I thought it was real quick, but I think, I'm getting a lot of blank stares here. 10:15 should be the, we will, we, we will end at 10:15.
That's fair enough, thank you very much. We're going to be, like I said, less than five minutes on direct with Mr. Harder's recall on traffic engineering. It's merely a confirmation that his conclusions are the same and no change based on plan design.
Okay.
So, you're previously sworn in and qualified as a civil engineer with an expertise in traffic engineering design, John Harder for Atlantic Design, Atlantic Traffic. Your licenses remain current and in good standing?
Yes, sir.
And you're aware you're still under oath?
Yes.
Counsel, is that okay?
Could you spell your last name again for the record?
H-A-R-T-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, John, you're familiar with the modified design that's been submitted to the board, sliding the structure?
Yes.
And the associated parking areas? You previously prepared a traffic assessment, you previously testified in connection with this case in the September 18, 2023 hearing. Has your analysis or conclusions changed at all based upon this redesign?
I know. We're, we still have the same access points proposed along Jefferson Road, the southern access point being a passenger car driveway, and the northern access point being a truck driveway with limited passenger cars along that, that aisle, and the building area is still the same, so the trip generation has also been maintained.
And the, as far as circulation goes, both for the passenger vehicles, the trucks, and even the fire emergency vehicle, which Mr. Crowder testified at length, that'll remain suitable and appropriate under this current design?
Yes.
And I know we're here prosecuting the structure relocation completely out of the buffer and in conformance with that residential buffer setback now, as opposed to the rotation design, which was discussed on a limited basis in the initial public hearing. From a traffic design standpoint, is this the better alternative than if we rotated the structure for the loading area to be front-facing towards Jefferson Road?
Right, I, I do think this is a better layout for two reasons. Trucks would make a right turn, so if they're coming and exiting to and from the south, trucks would enter on our current plan, as we are proposing it, as a 90-degree turn. If they, if we did have loading in the front, they would, those vehicles approaching from the, the south, for example, would have to make a 180-degree turn. And the second, less desirable case is that we would have the truck-trailer storage a row along the front of the property, which would also be an impediment a bit to sightlines as those, those vehicles come in, which you don't have in our current plan.
Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of Mr. Harder.
Have questions of the traffic engineer at this time?
Andrew, can you give some testimony? Since last time you came, you, they revised the turning movements and the truck circulation and the emergency vehicle circulation. Can you just give a little testimony on how, how the layout complies with, I think the question was asked earlier about if an emergency vehicle, fire truck, apparently goes into the, was it the northerly drive aisle with a loading docks, or how does he navigate back out? I know you have a template here, but what...
Right, I, I would rely on Ben's testimony for that. Our office did not run truck turning templates. We do in many cases.
I thought that we were going to do it with you, okay?
No, that would have been Bowler in this case. We do that in some cases, we're doing intersection design, but not for this.
It appears that he has a large striped area for the, for, for the fire truck. I guess I can get his testimony at some point on if that actually complies and if the fire department saw this, this turning down. I guess the other one was just, the adjoining property owner to the, I guess to the south, had some questions on parking and the parking count based on employees. And I don't want to put you on the spot, can you offer any testimony on the parking count based on ITE and warehouse, typical warehouse use?
Sure. When Merrill Contra brought that up, I did look up ITE online. We, we looked at two land uses for our development, which is ITE land use 150, which is warehousing, pretty standard, traditional warehousing, and then ITE land use 110, general light industrial. And when I run the size of the building, 106,000 and change square feet, the, the highest peak parking demand I found was load 70, 72 cars parked. So, I, I find that that is very consistent with the supply that Mr. Crowder has in the plan, which was with 99 actual spaces, which translates to greater spaces to BEV credit. So, the IT research supports the township's parking requirement, which we, where I should say, the supply we're providing, and is close to what the township requires.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the board have questions on this witness at this, this testimony? Hearing and seeing none, no, there are members of the public who have questions on this witness, on this testimony. Oh, yes, please.
I can just ask, John, about Merrill Contra, still representing.
If you could use a microphone.
Sure. So, if it's 72, what we, we, I think somebody, we had raised a question about shifts. So, if you have shifts, you could have the same full, a shift can be a full shift for each of two or more shifts, correct?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, so the way ITE would look at it is...
Square foot.
That square footage is however.
Right.
So, if, if IT, if you're using a variable that's employees, IT would look at total employees, it wouldn't do it by shift. So, throughout a day, there were 100 employees, that's how IT would count. I'm not clear on how the township does that.
That's the question, then, that if, before, I think there was a discussion that if you had shifts, each of them might only be 50 people, not 100 people, but there's no reason why you wouldn't have two full shifts. If you have 100 employees, you could have at least the warehouse employees, a full number on each. So, you're saying ITE wouldn't look at the fact that there could be overlap when one shift comes in and another goes out? You have enough for the, each shift, but there are issues when the shifts change?
If I, I did not run it based on the employees, I just had to look at...
Right, but for the time being, at least, the township looks at it by number of employees.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public have questions on this testimony at this time? Any further questions from the board? Hearing and seeing none. Counsel, what's your...
I don't think we're getting to another witness, Mr. Chairman. We've been going to architecture next with 10:15 stop time. I don't think we get there in nine minutes or so, so...
They're going to present the lighting and things like that as well?
We're going to go through the floor plan, the elevations, the rendering, the wall signage, the copy of it, and then wall-mounted lighting, yes. Mr. Crowder testified to the exterior freestanding lighting already, but architecture's probably going to be, you know, 15, 20 minutes on direct, and then whatever the course examination is, so I...
All right, when would you like the next hearing to be?
February 21?
February 26.
February 26? Yes, please.
All right, we've got a notice question that our attorney has brought up here.
And, Mr. Kelly, the front yard setback variance was not contemplated at the initial notice?
No.
And it wasn't generated by the board? So, I would expect that the applicant renoticed to include that?
I don't mind renoting, that's fine, for 2/26, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right. So, we have a motion to carry this case to February 26, is that it?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion to that effect?
Move.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This is notice to the public that's here for this case. We are carrying this case to February 26, 7:30 p.m. There will be a new notice that's generated, so your neighbors may wonder what they're getting in the mail. But at that time, we anticipate that we will come to a conclusion.
That's our plan, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Folks, thank you very much for your time. Have a good week.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, it, out of courtesy to everybody, we leave, we do not have conversations in here.